Taken role that all members of the board are present, having a quorum, we will proceed. The minutes from the December the sixteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting have been printed, posted and circulated. Are there any corrections to the minutes?
There's, I have a correction. It's just a typo. At the bottom of it, it's says that it reads, the next regular meeting will be Friday, November eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Okay. I thought it should be. Yeah, okay, sure.
Are there any other corrections to the minutes?
We'll take it from your pay.
Then the minutes will stand approved after Lori corrects the date on that one item. Okay, so under unfinished business today, we move on. Craig, water quality testing, please.
Last was also come back clean and good, so on the text on the C eight.
Okay. The ARP discussion. We, I'm sorry, I didn't bring the reconciliation funds with me, so I can't tell you the dollar amount, but we do still have ARP funds. I know that we've got way more projects than we'll ever have money for, but at any rate, we do have money still in our ARP fund. Council has allocated part of that for the forty-fifth place, but we don't know what that number's gonna be yet, so hopefully we still have plenty left after that job's completed, so. Any suggestions or questions about the ARP money? You may have seen in the paper. And that brings it to nine hundred and sixty-five million, I think. It's almost a billion dollars of opioid money that's coming, and the city of Vienna will receive part of that. And then there'll be a board set up to take care of seventy-two point five percent of that. It's my recommendation that Mayor Tom Joyce serve on that board, so hopefully we'll have a strong voice when that comes around, because they're gonna give it away, so. Anyway, that's, that's where we are. We don't know what that money will be, but we'll see what the restrictions are on how it can be spent, alright? So we go to the five-year plan. Are there any additions or discussion items on the five-year plan? Alright. Twelfth Street Lift Station Pump Replacement.
Yeah. We were along, they've made us mid on the pumps and stuff, just on the piping, just kinda gives outline what it looks like, pumps isn't stock, correct Mike? They're in place and the schedule time where they can come up here and get, once they get a lot of piping, they'll come up and start the project, so.
Are they going to install those, or are we?
They are.
How much refit are we gonna have to do to make them fit?
They will do all that, so.
Okay, how much, how much is it gonna take to have them fit them? I mean, is it gonna be all new piping, or is it just gonna be?
There's some new piping, it just, it's inside, the complex, the new piping, but the drawings, they indicated how they can, the new motor base plates and different piping things, so.
Once the piping change, our old pumps will not work anymore, right?
No, they'll start installing new pumps, and we won't be shut down, so.
I'm wondering what the value is going to be on the old pumps.
I don't know.
I mean, we don't have any other use for them, right?
No.
So we could sell them.
Could be a possibility, but the conditions are in, I don't know if we'd get any value out of them.
Okay, I haven't seen them. I haven't been down there for a while, so, okay. So what's the timeline on this? Any questions on the new pumps? Alright. So we go to forty-fifth place. Well, we won't talk about that today, let's just move on. Oh, sorry, Jerry. Craig, forty-fifth place.
We were along, we did locate utilities out on forty-first, or Fourth Avenue to tie that system in. I did ask Mike to incorporate the pipe that we currently have in stock that we had purchased a couple of years ago for the River Road upgrade. We want a larger sized pipe, so I have like a thousand foot of eight inch pipe I wanna incorporate in this project, try to keep the price down, because that seems to be the most expensive thing is piping, but right away, it's hadn't been acquired. He should finish up the engineering and should get out the bits, so.
And we're going to, are we gonna do the tie-in on Fourth Avenue at the same time?
Yes, we want to put the new water line down to Fourth Avenue, because the current water line is a two and a half inch by hundred cast iron pipe, and I cannot find any fittings for it, even tapping saddle. There was a new house built on Fourth Avenue, and we could not locate tapping saddle for it. We actually had to make our own in-house, so I asked Mike to include that in the project, so we can replace that line.
Questions? I've got them all. We already have a right of way for the water line, so we don't need to get in. But, you know, I, yeah, they're all done, Jerry. We, I don't know, we've probably had them for several months now. But, yeah, all that's done. Okay. Alright, then we'll move on. Waste and Water and Wastewater System Improvement Project. The update on the rate study. Dixie Callmire, who is Michael Griffith's assistant, has every piece of information that she has requested. She says that she will have us all of that information in the next two weeks. We spoke to her this week, hoping to have a more definitive answer before the meeting, but she said it will be within the next two weeks, so.
That'll be preliminary, correct? Because I still don't feel that they've contacted this department, in reference to future projects we might have, equipment-wise, so. I'm not that they're gonna give you preliminary numbers, what as a current needs, but I still think we should add projects in that rate study.
We'll make sure they, I mean, we have to give them an estimate, but, I mean, well, we can talk about that. We will call Dixie up, we'll call Michael up and say, hey, we wanna make sure that this is included in your estimates.
We'll give you guys something to look at, what we can look at and say, okay, do we wanna add this project into it? We can do the rate adjustments, that's what I'm trying to say. It's a preliminary, not official. Something we need to act on right away, so. Need to make sure we get the projects in there, so.
Questions on the water and wastewater study? Okay, judging upon running the dry dams, Craig?
Yeah, you know. Ann Mower, they've wanted to give us, we had a difficult time dealing with soil conservation department, getting return calls. Lori's tried to call them, I tried to call. We're doing our part, and we're trying to steer, you know, try to get grants, try to get paid for somehow, and then work with civil conservation department, so. It's still an ongoing project.
Lori, would you get me the name and phone number, please? I don't think your phone lines work, right?
Do what?
I'll call them. Alright.
Yep.
See where we're at. Alright, we still, I mean, all the rains we've had, pond runs held it. I don't think we've had any flooding. It's, I mean.
Just the, the bridge at Twenty-seventh Street, we're constantly cleaning it out, and a couple of bridges were constantly cleaned out, which, you know.
You should cut those trees down there on the bank, that would solve some of that.
Wrong side of the bridge.
Alright, so we go to H then. Burgess and Nyepel, Twenty-eighth Street Storm Drainage Improvements. That'll be you, Mike.
Okay, special for me, okay. We have got the preliminary layout done. I still need to get you guys, uh, pocketing these bits, or get ready to start on detail design. We have the layout completed for the project, whole, whole project.
You know, we've been working on this for a while, so if you would refresh the board's memory of what phase one will entail?
Phase one is from pond run to first section. Fifteenth Avenue, thirty-three or thirty-seven?
Thirty-second.
Okay. Yeah, it is.
Everything comes together, so.
When do you expect you'll have that ready for us?
Well, one of my, maybe.
Mike's talked to me several times about it, and we're, we're asking, looking about fitting in some kind of intention system in there, or something, hold back the water, won't dump it all at once, but still have the capacity there that alleviates some issues that we're having. But I don't wanna take a problem that we have here and dump it in the pond run and have a problem downstream, so that's what we're working out details about, where this such a system should go, and the capacity.
How big of a pipe are you projecting to be put in there, Mike?
Thirty-six, I think, I think we'll have to upsize.
Yeah.
Probably two or more.
Current pipe there now, now followed by the warehouses, twenty-four inch. Was it twenty-four? We had a collapse in the line, and certainly the warehouse, we had reduced down to eighteen, but, so it should help with pass quite a bit, so.
Yeah, that length, that, that should hold several gallons of water right there.
We just, we just don't wanna blow the bank apart on the other side, pond run, and it all comes out, so. We need to slow that water down a little bit, get in pond run where it doesn't flood everybody, so. Of course, we had pond run dredge, we wouldn't have that problem, right? Maybe not.
Okay. Alright, anything else on the Twenty-eighth Street Stormwater Project? Alright, let's go to new business then. You'll see the drawings that Craig has presented to everyone, and so Craig, if you'll talk to us about the specifications for the trench repair.
Yeah, Mike and I have worked together on this. He's, he made the drawings up, but this is something we need to approve through utility board and also maybe through council, but it's our specifications for road repairs. When a utility company comes in, what they're doing, currently doing, they're coming in and saw cutting a road, two-foot ditch, and replacing utilities, either it's electric, gas, cable, whatever, but when they do that on a road, with our material in being, being sandy base, it doesn't seem to hold up, and it holds up for a year. They finish job, or they do two-foot ditch, and then they're gone. A year later, the city crews are out repairing that street where it's settled, so I wanna get away from that. These specifications that they will have to follow from here on out, which is the same specifications I had to follow on River Road, the state, it's full lane replacement, so if you come through our streets, you make a two-foot cut to replace utilities, they have to replace that whole lane to it, and what that'll do is bridge it and take the utility cuts off roadways, which causes us extreme problems in the future, okay? Look for the drawings, if you got any questions about, we can answer them. Now, I'd like for you to approve new specifications for trench repair, and, uh.
I think this is gonna come into the forefront very quickly, because when the gas company comes in and they start tearing up all the streets and all the other things in order to put those new pipes in, they're gonna wanna Band-Aid it and run. I do not want that to have happened, because the state made us pave the entire lane on River Road. They're no better than we are. They should have to fix it back as well as it was before.
Yes.
So, is there any further discussion? And I'd entertain a motion for the approval of the specifications for trench repair regarding road and sidewalk crossings.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved, and secondly, that we approved the specifications for trench repair regarding road and sidewalk crossings. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, then I'll call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Russ, we have a ordinance on the city regarding the bond or the, I guess it would be bond?
Yeah, you have to post a bond.
For ten thousand dollars. I would like you to research that for us, and I would, I want that thing to say per address.
Per address?
Per address, and the reason for that is, if we made them put up a ten thousand dollar bond, and they're in here for two years, ten thousand dollars won't buy the paint to put the stripes back on the road, and Craig and I both have had multiple conversations with these guys. It's the outside contractor that they bring in from out of state, they do the work, put the dirt over it, a handful of grass seed, and they think they're done. That's not gonna happen, alright? So we wanna, we wanna make that tighter, and if not, then we're gonna have to increase it to fifty thousand dollars or something, because ten thousand dollars won't pay for the concrete now.
Well, let's, let's, let's talk about that, and we can talk about that later.
I need you to research it and see what, what the exact language is, and let us know.
You mean, what ordinance is now?
Yes.
Oh, I'll pull that up in a second, that's on the issue. Mine is just a pragmatic issue. Going in by address.
How else can you do it? Tell them something easier.
Before we do the state, it, we, we have an ongoing bond with the state, anytime we do work right away as required, it's per occurrence. Unfortunately, per occurrence, this is gonna be a year-long project, so I think the, probably the best thing to do is increase that bond, cover usage and not per address. It's per address, that's, you know, that's three thousand addresses.
Or we can do it by dollar amount, per time of project, project.
To.
Six months, then it has to be this amount.
Yeah.
Figure out how you wanna do it, okay? We just need to, we need options, okay? Because we need to make it, make it stiffer.
Because you, you know, three thousand addresses, ten thousand dollars a piece, that would.
Yeah, that's a.
That'd be awful, I don't know if any contractor could be able to afford to. Let's increase it or per occurrence or whatever, so, okay, state does that. I can get you the format what state does, so that's what we can go.
We need to make it stiffer.
I, I agree, one hundred percent.
Okay. Alright, Craig, we're down to managers' report.
That's quick. Couple of things, Brenda mentioned about the meter. When we installed this meter project, the fixed base network meter reading, we knew that, and they told us the same thing, that it's not gonna cover every meter, because it's the same thing as, it's example, you're at your house, and back in the old days, before we had cable and just by internet, you have, you put the antenna up, right, and the neighbor would get fourteen channels, you only might get three, and it's the same thing with the meters. There's dead spots in the city of Vienna that we cannot get read, so you might find a meter here and there, there's probably maybe twenty throughout the whole city. There is that case. You, I think twenty have to get manually read instead of five, six thousand, so. Another thing, Ray and I attended a meeting last week, last Thursday, last Thursday. Talked to other agencies, utility members across the state, and it was excellent meeting, because we talked to, there was two contractors on the board and a pipe distributor, which was Seattle Thornburg, and I learned a lot of things on that, because, I can use that too, so, sorry. You know, we were having a problem about getting materials, piping and fittings and everything in, and, you know, I could never figure out why, and the distributor, Seattle Thornburg, explained to us that, you know, everything's on a rational basis, rational basis, indicating if, if he has, he cuts in like twenty dressers or repair clamps, he might get that in one month, and he has a request for to sell fifty of these. He, he is dividing that up to the fifty customers that he would have, so everybody gets one or two, but they don't get the twenty that they might need, but they would get enough to get by, and that's what's happening with us also. You know, I'm starting to get products rolled in, I ordered in July, okay? So they're rationing these things out, where everybody has the product to stay in business, but you're not gonna get that great supply on the shelf, but we all feel comfortable, okay, so. Contractors talked about bidding processes. I don't really agree with them about the Monday-Friday thing, but, I mean, if you're gonna bid a project, you should, I don't care what day it is, week, if you want the project, you're gonna bid it either, right? Right? And I thought that was being lazy, playing golf or whatever they wanna do on Fridays or Mondays, but we all work, you know, seven days a week, so. So I kinda blew that out, but the contractor did mention a great thing. We, we discussed if, okay, we're looking at these projects, where's the engineers telling us, okay, it's gonna be three million dollars, and they're coming in at six million dollars. We wanna know why. Contractor said, well, a couple of things. Material prices has gone up so much, which it has. Y'all look at pickup trucks, you clearly see that, but the labor. Right now, there is a labor shortage, and these guys indicated to us that, look, we have to pay our guys more money to keep good workers here, because they don't have to work, or they can go somewhere else get a job. The same thing we're dealing with here is utility board and city. You have to keep good employees, you have to pay them to be experienced employees, okay? Contractors had that same issue, so had to raise the bids up, cover their expenses of employment, so. Couple of good contractors there. I mean, it was very knowledgeable.
Discussion, and you could ask them any question that you wanted, any core supply issues came up, and Craig's right, which I don't, I don't agree with, but there's no solution to it. They're rationing equipment.
Meter's everything.
Which means if you're one of their better customers, you can get whatever you want, but if you're a small city that only buys, you know, six of these things a year, chances are you're gonna get one. You know, and, but the logic there is, we're not emptying our shelves, we've got them on hand, and everybody gets a little. But they did say the supply issue was getting better, that they've, they've gotten materials in now and what have you.
Piping is getting.
Yeah, you know.
Rest is starting to roll in where they can make, make the piping stuff, so. And they talked about the, the issues about having to buy in America, what we're having, so with all this great money, you have to buy American-made products, and it's unfortunately for America, it's, all this stuff's not made in America. It takes a while to get that factory back in here, so we can acquire products from it. So that's another issue.
The made in America stipulation adds a tremendous amount to the project, because a lot of that stuff is not available at all.
Yep.
And I mean, they hate it. Those guys hate it, you know, but that's one of the, one of the stipulations.
Great, great meeting, huh?
Yeah.
Very knowledgeable. People asking questions, kinda, it kinda shows that we're not staying on this island by ourselves. Every, every water company in St. West Junior is the same. every water company in St. West Virginia is the same issue that we have, so. Back to that, uh, we talked about the gas company. I'm trying, I'm working with my foreman and my crew leaders to say, hey, what's the worst-case scenario on this gas line coming in and these guys start breaking the water lines? What do I need to peel on the shelf to make sure we cover? I'm about to get out a pretty big order, discussed before, cover future problems that gas company might cause. Because they're going to hit water lines. That's just nature of the business. We hit their gas lines, they hit our water lines, but we need to make sure they get repaired. So if I have to order 10 additional dressers just for this project that they're doing, I need to get, start getting them ordered, which we're working. Then again, they're going to tell me they're going to ration out, they're not going to send me three. So I'm working with several different distributors to try to get these products in. But it's funny that he mentioned that guy from C. F. Thornburg, that he's getting calls from people he's never heard of before and they're not really concerned about them people or dealing with current customers, which we are, okay? So we're good with C. F. Thornburg. I'm, I catch myself doing the same thing. I'm calling everybody that I can to get a product in. Not getting much response out of people I really don't talk to. And I can see why now because they don't really care about us. We haven't bought from them in the past and they're not really concerned about us now because everybody's in the same product. We're trying to get through it. You'll see some increase in, in our expenditures of, uh, repair clamps and dressers and piping. Be patient. It, it never goes bad. If we don't use them for the gas company, which I hope we don't, uh, distribute on the shelf. And once that product's over, we'll start cutting back our demand for the product. We'll start using what's on our shelves, so. We might have, like I said, big expense off the bat, but yet we'll distribute used. I did. Everything else has gone good. Been a lot of service line leaks. No main lines, you know, so, uh, been pretty easy on us last.
Okay, so there is a issue that every water utility in the state is dealing with. And it's the lead and copper rules. We've talked about it over the last couple of years. And unfortunately, the timeline is now getting close on the lead and copper rules. I don't know. Do you have someone down at Parkersburg, Steve, that is entirely in charge of that part of it or just how are you all handling the paperwork and all the stuff that inspections that have to be done? Okay, well.
The issue that we're having is this thing is so complicated.
Okay, but it's complicated. Know that there's anybody got a handle on this thing, you know? And just to refresh your, your memories about this thing, you know, we were tasked with the job of making a inventory of every lead service line in the city of Vienna. And Craig, when we installed all the new water meters and all that, the guys were in every pit in the city, every one. And we have no lead service lines. To our knowledge.
Yes.
Russ, you know, lodger this up. To the best of our knowledge, your honor.
I don't want, I don't want to be brusque.
Okay?
To our knowledge.
Yeah, to our knowledge, there are none. Allegedly, supposedly, whatever. There are no lead supply lines in the city, all right? But then we're tasked with going into these people's homes and verifying that they don't have a into their house. And if there is, then we have to change it out. The same with the schools and the daycares and all these other things because they're worried about lead in the bloodstream of young children. And Lori does a good job of trying to keep up with the paperwork that's involved with this. And I keep getting letters from feds saying, this timeline, this right here. All right? I don't know the answer to this, but I know the absolute last thing the Vienna Utility Board wants is to be cited because we aren't in compliance with the lead and copper rules. All right? I, I don't know the answer to this. I don't know whether Burgess and Neipel has a process that you're working with any other cities to make sure, because everybody has to do it. There's no, it doesn't make any difference if you got 3,000 people or 30,000 people. You have to do this. Have you guys had any experience with any other cities? Making sure that we've.
Yeah, um. Yeah, the first thing you have to do is figure out, of course, where you could have them. And that's all based upon the age of the house. Any house that was built, I forget the number, the year, it was 84, 86, when lead quit being used. They do houses won't require, they don't have them. You didn't have to test them. So uh, what you do is you start with kind of a review of historical data, looking for when subdivisions were built. Hopefully you can cut some of them out going forward. Once you do that, then it's, it's, once you find areas, as you go out and you check, you know, you have to go in the house to look and see there's sampling too that's involved. The second part is doing it. And then, once you have that list, you will have to, like Mary said, is replace those, but there's great money for that, I understand. Is the, the feds will cover any costs with lead service lines. So, um, it's, it's the identification part that's, it's the critical part now.
Have you done or done any audits of cities to see where they are in the compliance process?
I have not, but we have people that have, yes.
Great. We want audited. All right? Hey, hey.
I, I'm going to tell you what we're doing here and, and Tommy can back me up on this. My assistant back there, the camera guys today. Several months ago, we sent out questionnaires to every resident city, okay? In the water bill, saying, hey, this is a form we'd like for you to fill out indicating what type of pipes you have in your house. You can either fill out a paper sent back to us or you give your web link for Ezra System G I S. So you can fill it on here if you wish. Okay, out of 6,000 residents we sent out, we got 800 back. So, and, uh, we've noted that if you look at our G I S software, we noted where we received the information back and what the response was on that paper. We attached it to the data, to each data point. We did have a couple that said, I think I got lead lines. So we went out to those houses and there was only like five or six. And we went in, asked them to coincide and we inspected their lines and it didn't appear to us that they was lead lines. They was just galvanized lines or, you know, that looked like lead. Because the questionnaire is pretty, we asked what is, what color's your pipe? What's it look like? Can you scratch it? Pretty detailed thing. Now, we completed that. So we have that data in our G I S software. Now, Tommy, did you not attend a meeting, what, two weeks ago, the Ezra and G I S software? And they said, where we was at compared to every other city? There you go. So there's our audit, okay? You can pay Mike 200 bucks an hour, but we're doing a pretty good job.
G I S wise, there's nobody around us can touch you. They're not. I mean, we're literally the poster child for G I S. Everybody, uh, you want to know how G I S works, you call the city of Vienna. Okay? I mean, seriously, all right? Mike, all of these documents and all these things, all right? There's a process to this thing. All right? There are timelines that should be met. There are things that you need to audit us because I am sorry, but you know who gets to sign off on all these, that every one of these was done? That would be me. All right? Well, when I don't understand and when the state of West Virginia says we missed a deadline, that's not acceptable. It's not. Lead and copper is something you do not fool with, period. We have to do this one by the books, all right? Now, I need you to get with your people back there and you tell us what it will cost to do this audit for us to make sure that we've done everything that's in that procedure to where we need to be. And if not, then you can sign the doggone thing, okay? Because when I get those certain.
Well, I can sign, but it won't matter. It's for coming to you.
It's not fun, all right?
Yeah, well, I, trust me, I get the emails too, but, so, but I, I'm just saying, we're, I don't care about audit. If you want to come in, that's fine. We'll, we'll have a good time. You buy me lunch, but whatever. But, uh, it's, we are, I don't want you all to think that we're not doing our job here, okay? We are above the game, okay? We, we have the data, we have, I wish, I wish we'd have got all 6,000 responses back. And, and we've sent it out on our Facebook page, please fill these out. But some people are not going to fill them out. You're not going to get 100%. You're not going to get 50%. Uh, if you know people, please tell them. Get online, fill this questionnaire out because, you know, we want to come out and look. We want to get that data in our, in our system. And we've done really well with that, so. About 800, so. Yeah, but I mean, that's, I'm not happy with that.
No, but I mean, that's a pretty good turnaround.
Yeah. It's funny because most, probably 750 of those actually returned back on paper. And if you get online, you can fill out that questionnaire online. It takes five minutes. It's pretty simple. And it doesn't take any personal information. Just add, only thing it does is have your address. And just tell me what you think you have in your house. If you think you have lead, we'll come on the spectrum for you. So we have no issue with that. I'll send the guys out. We'll walk in the house, we'll inspect it, make sure it's, you know, proper type of line, so.
You know, all the association meeting for a year or maybe as long as five. Everyone, you need to. Need to go to every major. Water lines that go up to the building itself. Inside the school, water. Lead solder that's still there. And that's with the testing, you know, the water samples that needed to be done, uh, to that. It's inside their building. They still want that data.
And it's there. I mean, we all know, you know, the brass lead rule, I remember years ago, you know, eliminating all the lead that was in brass. You know, that was a big ordinance of that time, try to get people to make the brass that don't have lead in. They've completed that. But yet there's, there's some fittings out there and their old houses might have brass and it was lead in. You wouldn't know. I mean, you look, it looks brass, but it might have lead content. You might pick up. Or like I said, the old copper lines, if they soldered out, it's old lead solder. It's not like that anymore. Yeah. We can do as much as we can. So that's what we're, we're staying, we're staying compliant. We have a great database and I, I just want you guys to understand that, that, you know, we're people we have here employee-wise, Tommy and Joe and Lori, um, been doing a great job on this, so best that we can, so. Are we perfect? Absolutely not, but.
Well, the disadvantage that we have is that we're small. We don't have 10 people that can do this job. Okay? And the other, the other problem is, honest to goodness, the sampling that you are required to do is, it's unbelievable.
Crazy.
Yeah, I mean, it is. I, I know Lori, we've had this conversation many times, 60 different sampling points. Yeah, and, and then you have to get it all in. And I mean, it, it's, it's just, it's an incredible amount of work that has to be done. This has to be.
On our dime.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
There's nobody, no grants out there saying, hey, we're going to pay for this. No, it's, it's on us.
Yeah. And so, you know, we have 6,000 addresses that we have to do a random sampling in, in neighborhoods to make sure it's got broad coverage. And then, you know, Dave Thorne, um, you know, does a great job. Dave's what, 30-year employee. He's been, he knows the, he knows how to do it. And, and Lori, I mean, we've, it's just, it's an overwhelming task. But they don't care. You will do it.
Yeah.
Um, and Craig mentioned a little while ago, another city in the state, they got, I mean, they got hammered. It was one of those incredibly bad timing things that happened. It happened on a holiday weekend and they were supposed to do a sample and they didn't get it done. And the state literally dropped the hammer on them. They just said, look, we're not, you had to do this. Well, there was no people. What are you going to do? But anyway, that's the thing. This is a very serious, um, protocol that they've established for lead and copper. And so I want to make sure that we are working. And if we're not, we're going to get here in a hurry. I think we're in good shape. We do. We've done what we need to do. But there's too many chances of something dropping into cracks. So. Okay, remember you need to tell us what you've done in the past as far as the audit goes, so that we'll know that it's a timeline of these things that had to be done and we go back through Lori's records and show you that we did them. Where we need to be, we will get there. It's, it's that, it's that serious. It really is. And I do know how to spell your name. I will write your name.
I don't care.
There's no person in the world could, there's no person in the world could read your signature, so. Gee, man. That's a fact.
I, I had a question because we kind of, when you were giving your manager's report, I just wanted to know if you had any updates on those Neptune meters that we discussed last meeting?
Well, some, yeah, no, uh, not from Neptune. But I did speak to C. F. Thornburg, we were down there about their meters. They're also had census meters, which Parkersburg uses, is, is experienced a lot of the same issues. Chips, uh, is a shortage. So they're rationing their meters out also. So it's not Neptune, it's census and Hershey and like every meter, we, Randy and I spoke to a couple of different companies that, um, different utilities that held meters and everybody's having that same issue, a shortage of meters. And, uh, the proper meters that they use, reference electronics. But, uh, the legal side of it, no, I don't have any information for you yet. We're still working on that process.
Okay. Thank you.
If, if we took what they've offered us to replace the meters that we have, it would be approximately $600,000.
Just for the meters?
Just for the meters. No installation, just for the meters. Doesn't include the data collectors. And for a system that we took a 20-year warranty on, that we're now coming up on the ninth year, we have 11 years worth of value sitting right there that somebody has to credit us for.
Yeah. I mean, okay. The meters, uh, they offered like a $138, I forget what the exact number was, to, uh, we pay them, they give us a new type of top. Now, it's not the old meter. The bases, they're the same. It's electronics of it, okay? And we got to install them, plus the data collectors, which is $20,000 to $30,000 piece.
And we have four of those.
Yeah. What I'm wanting to do is, uh, you know, they, they want to say, okay, we'll give you a new 20-year warranty. Well, that's great, but, I told you four of my, what I want to do, and I think this issue should do is like, hey, you know what, we'll, uh, you're going to give us some new meters, you're going to give us data collectors and, and we, we can install them and we can get them done pretty quick so they don't have to worry about water. I just pop top up a new top one. And, uh, we'll talk, but charging me for anything? Absolutely not. Right, Russ?
Yes. As far as alternative, an alternative, are we having the same issue as far, or we have the same issue as far as getting?
Yes, if we went to Hershey meter, uh, yes, we, there would be a shortage on those. We wouldn't be able to replace them right away. It'd be, it'd be a probably five-year project, so.
Is the issue that I see?
That's correct.
So that's, that's one. Second issue is if we move to a separate meter provider because of the supply chain shortage. Call that short. It would still get a number of years before we replace all of them. You say five years?
At the minimum. Yeah, because we're setting six thousand meters. At the minimum. Yeah. Cause we're setting six thousand meters. And C. I. Thornburg is getting fifty a month. What do you say?
I told the guy from C. I. Thornburg, we'd take three hundred. He laughed.
Yeah.
Thirty.
Yeah.
And it's not going to help. That's a month's supply for you.
I wouldn't replace the ones that go bad.
Right.
I'm sorry. That's just.
No, that's fine. I mean, it's, there's, yeah. What?
If you started to change the value, then something.
Yeah. It's, it's, we'd have to do our pulls on two different type of systems while we read, we can read both. Um, we do, the process would be, we'd have to leave our current data collectors up. It's all new data collectors, which would probably be cellular based instead of radio based and our wifi based. So we'd run two data collectors and start changing meters out. We'd have to read a set of meters off the old system, then read, uh, new meters off the new system incorporated in our mini link, two data pools and it was not going to be easy. So it could be done. And the girl's Karen, it does it. She's excellent. Uh, it could be done, but it'd be difficult. So it's, it's not going to be easy to change out either way it goes.
Steve, are you familiar with the meters that you all use? It is. I know that's the name brand, but is the body the similar, similar to Neptune or would it, if we switch from Neptune to equal, are they not interchangeable?
They're, all meters are based on a width base. Okay. I mean, they're all going to be like eight and a quarter inches wide. Okay. So when you go set or reset a meter, you can set a census, a Neptune or Hershey, they're all going to have that same dimension, five, eight and a quarter inches. Okay. But the base unit itself, where ours is like a brass unit, all the new census is either plastic. And, uh, so it's all one integrated unit. Ours is two part system. You have the brass system, the chamber. Then you have the electronics set on top. Then you have the antenna, the antenna and the data collector, same thing. But, yeah. So, uh, Hershey meters now are ultrasonic and they're just a piece of pipe with a little diode on top that goes out to the antenna. So everybody's meters are different. Um, different configurations. It, it, I keep referring to auto parts, but that's why I know them best. It's like dealing with Ford motor, Chevy motor, Chrysler motor. You can't change pistons within themselves. Right? So that's the same thing. They all do the same principle, make the car go, but you can't interchange parts in it. So. Unfortunately, but it was the old same.
Well, changing the head out is a whole lot easier than changing the body.
Yeah. We could, and we was, we've done real well changing meters out from the quantities we got per day, but they would almost triple or quadruple the amount. Or we could just change the base. Cause you just pop a pin out. There's a little mechanism, you push it, pops a pin out, twist it, it comes off and then you want to push it in, push the pin in. You're ready to go. So, yeah, it could be very easy. Another thing while you guys are here and I know it's off subject meters, but it is, uh, I have sent, uh, Lori is writing up the draft letter to stick in the newsletter and the Facebook page. Um, if you know people out there that I'm getting ready for this project. So we've advised people, it is a responsibility to keep this meter box clean. Like the outside, keep the grass mowed out around it. Eat, and we eat it. Uh, keep it, the vegetation off of, keep the, um, the flyers, the bushes, the stuff that people's planted on the path. So, just reminding people that, hey, you need to look at your meter, make sure it's cleared for us. Cause if we come in and do it, we probably don't do as delicate a job as what they do. So. We like to dig back, oh, to dig up stuff. Yeah. So if they keep the grass trimmed out around it, where we do, it's a lot easier to change out for us. A lot of people plant flyers and stuff on our meter, bushes or mulch. And they don't like seeing the meter box out in the yard, but it's, it's real difficult for us.
Joe, anything today?
Nothing here.
Steve? Tim? John? Russell? Lori? Okay, great. You're a journey. Mike, thanks for coming.